I'd like to then call the meeting to order, please. This is the July 25 regular monthly meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Joining us tonight is Ms. Donna Perez, who is filling in for Mr. Moffett, who's on vacation this week. So, Ms. Perez, you're in charge for the next couple of minutes. We need a statement of compliance.
Okay. Good evening. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the local papers on July 22, 2017, and July 23, 2017. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcasted by the Board at a later date on cable TV Channel 77 and files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respect the request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of the meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Thank you. Now, does your salute to the flag?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, equalized, liberty, and justice for all.
Ms. Perez, the roll call, please.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Mr. Biancomano?
Present.
Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Mr. McNamara?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
Mr. Clubfeld?
Here.
And absent is Brittany Montgomery and Jennifer Evans.
So, we do have a quorum, and we have six necessary for the vote later on. Okay? Thank you. Just so everybody knows, the -- one of the items on the agenda tonight is the approval or the vote on the lease -- later on, the finance thing. That requires a public hearing, which will -- has that been advertised to start at 7:30. So, we're going to start with the normal reports, committee reports, superintendents' reports, and if we're done before 7:30, we're going to have to stop and wait till 7:30 for the clock to start for that advertised public meeting. So, if there's an awkward pause somewhere in the next half hour, that'll explain that. Dr. Johnson, go to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So, this evening, my superintendent's report is rather brief. Just letting the Board know after our comprehensive committee meetings that we've had this week that we are currently working through a number of facilities projects in the district. And just to give a small overview, we are working on the third floor and the fourth floor of this building right now to renovate the classrooms and the educational spaces. We are also working on the gym downstairs in the basement here, as well as the cafeteria area. We are prepped for work that's going to be done in the high school biomedical sciences lab, and we're also doing some small upgrades and facilities projects in some of our other buildings as well. In terms of curriculum and instruction, we are working very diligently to develop and design curriculum for the opening of school. One area in particular is mathematics, and we are reviewing materials right now from a number of companies and a number of publishers, but we're pretty close to settling in on one particular program that we like at the kindergarten through fifth grade level and then at the sixth through eighth grade level. In addition to that, we are also participating in a number of professional development trainings, particularly Project Lead the Way, our STEM program. We have a number of summer programs that are going on today. We had our theater end-of-the-summer-program showcase, and it was extremely exciting. A lot of our kids participated in that, and it actually went on for a couple of hours. The kids really did a lot of different acts, so it was very nice. We also have virtual school programs going on in the summer through A-plus credit recovery at Mentum and Edgeseer, where kids at all grade levels are taking virtual and online classes. In addition to that, we have some summer academic support programs going on at the elementary school level and the middle school level, and we have our extended-year special education program that's taking place at Wallace, and the kids are having a ball from what some of our parents are kind of reporting in. And also, working very hard to make sure that there's no summer slide or summer slip in skills, so we're very happy about that. In addition to the summer programs, the curriculum, professional development training, and some of the facilities work that's going on in the summer, the one important thing that I want to report out to the Board, which we talked about at one of our committee meetings, is that our kindergarten enrollment has increased from the last meeting that we've had. We had 14 new enrollees in kindergarten from our last June meeting, putting us in a situation where we have to contemplate opening another section of kindergarten, taking us from 16 sections to 17 sections. As a result of that, we had to make some determinations. We do not have space to put another kindergarten classroom in Collabro. We don't have space to put one in Brant, and we do not have space to put one in Wallace. At our last meeting, we talked about the fact that we were pretty much out of space in Connors as well. So, right now, we had to juggle a little bit and look at all of our programs, and the one determination that we did make was taking an innovative classroom program, which is a new special education program that we're operating at the Connors Elementary School, and moving it from one classroom to a smaller group instruction room, thereby freeing up one classroom, giving us the ability to add another kindergarten. By adding this other kindergarten, it gives us a tiny bit of wiggle room in Wallace, where we have -- out of our seven kindergartens, we have six of the seven kindergartens that have one, two, or three seats available. Right now, we seem to be, based on historical trends, this may be the time where we'll stabilize a little bit from now until the beginning of September, and then we'll determine whether or not we get some ins and outs. Hopefully, or maybe not hopefully, who knows, depending on how you look at it, we're probably going to be stable at 17 sections of kindergarten, but we'll have to wait and see if there's another rush or if there's not another rush coming in. But we are watching, and I do thank and want to publicly thank all of the families and parents who are, in fact, moving out of the district because they are actively and diligently letting us know if they are, in fact, leaving. So, we're preparing some transfer cards, et cetera, and it gives us a really good idea of what our realistic projections are. So, with that being said, that's what I have for the superintendent's report, and in the August meeting, we'll do a full comprehensive overview of the opening of school and the new programs that we will be rolling out.
Great. Thank you. Normally, we do a business administrator's report. Is there anything?
No, there's no report.
I'm going to move quickly to committee reports, and then -- I haven't forgotten, John.
Thank you.
Communications. Ms. Delara, is there a communications report?
Yes. So, the communications committee met on August 24. In attendance were Ms. Soboloff, Ms. Evans, Mr. Clubfeld, and Dr. Christine Johnson. The items discussed were the new district mobile app, which was released. You've seen us on social media and kind of on our website that this app was released. So, I just wanted to say I thank you to the City of Hoboken and H-MAG. They shared our social media posts regarding the app, and a big thank you to all the families that have already downloaded the app. And if you haven't done so, you can easily find it by just typing in "hobokensd" on your Google or in the App Store. It's free, and it's easily downloadable. We also discussed a -- committee discussed a comprehensive and extensive Q and A in process of being completed for all preschool and kindergarten, which will be questions regarding topics such as placement, waitlist, the process for each of these. It will be completed, hopefully, by the end of this week, and when it is completed, there will be a link posted on the district webpage, and we will also be posting on social media. To access our website, you know, to please visit hoboken.k12 nj.us. And lastly, the committee discussed a new initiative called Talk in the Park, invitation for conversations with pre-K 3 and 4 and K families. So, this is a program in which new families will have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Christine Johnson, along with other new families entering our program. Families will have the opportunity to ask questions regarding our curriculum, kind of what the day will look like for your child, and just meet other families that are kind of going along the journey with you. So, families will meet at Demeris School right here, and then they will walk over to the park and just kind of have a very relaxed kind of meeting and communication with Dr. Johnson and other families. A letter will be sent home this coming week with various dates and times that hopefully will suit you and your families, so be on the lookout for that. And that is the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Soboloff, Curriculum Committee.
The Curriculum, Athletics, and Performing Arts Committee met also on that same day, July 24, with Dr. Johnson, Mr. Clubfeld, Ms. Delara, and myself. There were only two items on the agenda that were discussed. That's in the athletic area. That's the trainer and the athletic appointment. We've discussed a lot about the curriculum. Just highlighted a little bit here, the middle school program of studies has been finalized, and we discussed the Hoboken High School, the personal growth period. There's a lot more classes and opportunities and clubs and academic options during that period. STEAM and STEM opportunities, including things like the Hackathon, the Steam Tank Challenge, Cyber Patriots, and the Academic Bowl. There's one new interesting program called Trout in the Classroom. In a classroom in every school in the district, they'll be raising trout. And then there's Global Conflicts and Resolution Institution, inspired by the -- via the Inspired Classroom. But as we'll learn more about that in August, I think there'll be a presentation about all the different things that were discussed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Madigan, Facilities Committee.
Okay. Facilities. In attendance were Mr. Clubfeld, Mrs. Johnson, Mr. Callagie, and myself. The superintendent touched on a lot of the things we spoke about, but I'll give you a short one. We had one facilities request from the City of Hoboken, which we thought was fine using our pool for the summer program. We talked about the relocation again of the middle school, and we were lucky enough to take a tour, and the work seems much ahead of schedule than I would have thought at this time when we were discussing that. So, I think we're right on schedule there. Also, some improvements that are going on. The biomed classroom work has started. In Wallace, the sound system has been installed, and the curtain will be installed, hopefully, within the next two weeks. And also, work on the bathroom at Brant is in process of being done. Okay? That's all on that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Madigan. Finance. Mr. McNamara, you're doing that this evening.
Sure. The Finance Committee met on July 19 from 7:00 to 7:50. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Moffett, Mr. Biancomano, Mr. Clubfeld, and myself. We reviewed all agenda items. The following items, we went into sort of deeper discussion or had concern. 3.05 and 10.11. Both of those are related to lease financing that we're here to discuss tonight. We went over the details of each and recommend both for approval. The 10.11 is approval of financing for equipment, including new computer network hardware, interactive LCD boards, and Chromebooks. And 3.05 is the notice of the public hearing related to the ground lease tonight for building project improvements here at Demeris. We discussed item 10.04, the contract for the Hoboken Police Department. It might see an increase from prior years. This is just because there was a consolidation of two separate contracts into one, so just wanted to bring that to your attention. 10.05, want to also highlight this one. This was increase to contracts due to larger-than-expected occupational therapy costs. Dr. Johnson gave us a detailed explanation of these costs related to preschool students and increase -- and students has led to an increase in occupational therapy costs. We also agreed to increase the budgeted amounts for next year due to the overage. 10.10, want to highlight this one as well. District was informed that our state aid would be reduced by approximately $213,000. We were prepared for this reduction in aid, so we had moved money into an emergency reserve account. Will use money from that account to cover this difference. We were offered loans from the states to cover for districts impacted, but we will not need to use those. 13.01, also wanted to highlight that as well. This is -- this submission reflects also a reduction in federal aid to Title II Part A, which is professional development funding, approximately $277,000. After we reviewed the agenda items, we reviewed our food service operations. We still do not have a final financial for the year, but we are currently working on two mailings to try and collect additional money for those who have not yet paid their bills, but we do not expect the unpaid balance to exceed the $50,000 reserve that we have. We also then reviewed the annual audit process. Started earlier this year than usual due to the work being done here at Demeris. The business office was being moved, so the auditors completed their first part and are expected to come back in late August for additional follow-up questions. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. And I am doing the Governance and Personnel Committee report on behalf of Ms. Evans tonight. That meeting took place yesterday afternoon. In attendance was Ms. Delara, Ms. Soboloff, myself, and Dr. Johnson, and Ms. Evans sat in via telephone. We talked a lot about all the transfers and hires and resignations, which are all outlined on the agenda tonight, and which Dr. Johnson circulated the various explanations. It all made sense to us. We went over it extensively yesterday, and it looks -- it makes sense for the district, and it's a lot of -- I don't think we're necessarily increasing the staff by an awful lot, not significantly at all. It's all in terms of replacements and transfers. The one item that we didn't review was just circulated to us tonight because Dr. Johnson just received approval from the county superintendent on attainment of the merit goal that hadn't been able to be approved previously. So, that's on the agenda tonight for approval, and I think I would certainly recommend that because when she attains a goal, it's usually something very good for the district, and in this case, it was her commitment to raise the AP scores, and the county superintendent verified that that did, in fact, happen. So, congratulations on that, and thank you. I think the committee does recommend all other items for approval, and that would conclude the governance report. Any questions on any committees before we proceed?
I do. Dr. Johnson, you mentioned we just increased one class size for kindergarten. I was just curious, the waitlist for pre-K 3 and pre-K 4, do you have numbers of how many?
Yes. So, right now, we don't have any students on the pre-K 4 waitlist, and our pre-K 3 waitlist is at -- we were at 51 yesterday when I checked at the end of the day. We were at 51 at the end of the day yesterday. I didn't get an update today, probably at the end of the week, but it has -- that's dropped. We were at 77, I think, about a month and a half ago. So, usually, it's about 15 to 20 per month.
That you're placing? Okay. And I think that number, 51, is certainly better than last year at this time, I think.
It's a lot better than last year. Yeah, it's a lot better.
And then, it's probably for the fact that we have increased -- we increased our classes due to state funding and things, correct?
That's correct.
And I just wanted to make a comment, and Mr. McNamara touched upon it in his report. We are losing $213,000 in state funding, but that is down from the projected $867,000 that we were going to lose. But, I mean, we don't like to lose any funding, but obviously, it's not as bad as it was, and I'm glad the district found some room in the excess surplus to fund that. That's it. Thanks.
Anybody else? Now, it would come in time for the president's report, such as it normally is not. And I -- Mr. Madigan has asked for a moment to speak.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Clubfeld.
I yield to you.
I just want to bring up something about a former district employee that was here a long time, has grown up in Hoboken, and I graduated from Hoboken High, but I never was under this person. But there was a person of Mr. Frank Spano. He was a principal forever at Brant School. All -- while I went to a school, he was the principal there, a young man. And later in life, I got to meet him more because he -- when I was 19, I took the high school baseball umpire's class, and he was the teacher of that. He was a high official in football and basketball throughout the state of New Jersey, but he passed away this last week, so it's just sad. And he started teaching in our district in 1966, and he became a principal in 1972 till he retired in 2000. So, I just wanted to bring it up. He was a very nice gentleman, and I had contact with him through life, just in the school system, knowing him, and through sports, and he was very well-liked in our district. So, that's all I'd like to bring up about him. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for bringing it to the Board's attention. My own looking into his career, he actually started his career as a teacher in this building.
Yeah.
So, it kind of touched me sort of deeply when I learned that. He went on to be a principal at Brant, then was principal here.
Year for year. And then the high school for four.
Went on to the high school. So, we certainly owe condolences to his family and acknowledge his very long and sincere commitment to the district and to the kids of Hoboken. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Now, we're going to have to call a quick recess for six minutes. We have to have a public hearing on the --
Six minutes.
The ground lease financing thing, which has been advertised to start at 7:30. So, we cannot start that portion until 7:30. So, I beg your indulgence for five or six minutes, what we call a brief recess.
Okay.
All right. As I briefly and awkwardly explained earlier, that as the Board contemplates financing, state law requires that we have a public hearing as we consider borrowing money. So, part of this process is this public hearing, which Ms. Perez is now going to read the resolution out loud as required by regulations.
Okay. The Board of Education of the City of Hoboken and the County of Hudson, New Jersey, hereby gives notice that a public hearing shall be held on July 25, 2017, at 7:30 p.m. at the Demeris Auditorium, 158 Ford Street, Hoboken, New Jersey, to consider a lease purchase financing in an amount not exceeding $1,410,000 to provide funds for renovations, alterations, and improvements at the Demeris School, including consisting of interior construction, plumbing, electrical repair, finishes, and furnishings, including financing and other incidental work and costs. The total cost of this project is expected to not exceed $1,410,000. The lease will be paid over five years. Taxpayers and other interested persons shall have the opportunity to present questions or to make comments to the Board and the public with respect to the proposed project, the estimated cost, and the proposed method of financing. Proper notice of public hearing was published in the Jersey Journal on July 12, 2017. Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on the intent to lease purchase finance facilities project as found on the agenda tonight. Hoboken Public Schools is proposing the continuation of a lease purchase financing strategy for facility projects. The district leased purchased several projects last year, 2016, '17, and included: one, replacement of the turf field at JFK Stadium; two, Wallace Gym renovations; three, high school science labs; four, high school robotic labs; five, floor refurbishing and replacement at Brant; and six, in Brant toilet renovations. This year, 2017 and '18, the district will look to both the equipment and ground lease agreements to support this year's activity. The first part was approved by the Board. The intention to enter into the equipment lease arrangement was approved at the last Board meeting, June 27. The bid opening is scheduled for 1 p.m. Thursday, July 27. The $1,700,000 proposal will not exceed 4% for a term of five years. The second part of the subject finances $1,410,000 ground lease agreement, which an intent resolution found on tonight's agenda, Resolution 10.11 or 10.11. The main difference between a ground lease and an equipment lease is that with the equipment leases, the finance company takes an interest in the various pieces of equipment, whereas in a ground lease, the finance company takes interest in the property. In this case, the financing company will take an interest in the AJ Demeris School land and building as security. Another difference between an equipment lease and a ground lease is a longer approval process and ultimate funding. This lease purchase will need approval from the Commissioner of the New Jersey Department of Education. Once the Board approves the concept of the ground lease, our bond attorneys will prepare an application to be submitted and considered by the Commissioner of Education. After Commissioner approval, the district will be able to proceed with funding of the agreement. So, what will the ground lease finance? The list of facilities projects include: one, Demeris School renovations as the middle school is moved in; two, Demeris technology, infrastructure, and upgrade, including expanding the computer network to support instructional spaces; three, district-wide security system upgrade and expansion; four, computer network backup system upgrade; five, two new high school labs, one biomedical and one computer; six, two new classroom interactive boards for the middle and high schools, 72 LED boards. In conclusion, the Board of Education will be considering the approval of the intent to pursue a lease purchase agreement with a ground lease for AJ Demeris School. The annual lease purchase principal and interest rate payments can be included in the district's regular budget for a term of five years. That concludes the public statement.
Thank you, Ms. Perez.
There were no questions or anyone submitted any questions?
That's my next comment.
No comments.
No public speakers? Any board members have a comment? I guess we can just close that portion of the meeting and then resume with the public comments on agenda items.
There are no public comments on agenda items, no names.
Thank you. Then we can move on to approval of the consent agenda. If I can have a motion.
Motion. Second, second. Motion or second.
Ms. Angley, the motion, and Ms. Soboloff was the second. Is that fair?
That's fair.
Before we vote, can I ask a question?
Please. Well, that's it. So, the motion's on the table now. We can open it for discussion.
Okay. 10.10, the reduction, I think that's it. The reduction in state aid?
Yes.
Why do we have to vote on this?
Because I think it affects the transfers of the budget.
Yes.
Mr. Moffett needs to go in with the business office.
We have to make a transfer to decrease the revenue line for the adjustment aid for the $213,000, and we also have to make a
for the 213,000, and we also have to make a transfer from budgeted fund balance for the 213,000. That's right.
And, I want to make a comment on that part. The people that voted for us to lose money, our people in office, hurt the taxpayers of Hoboken, the children of Hoboken on this issue. No matter what they look at it and say with the good of their thing, Hoboken students lost money, and the taxpayers are gonna have to come out of their pocket to pay the state anyway, and they're not getting their bank for their buck. That's just what it is, okay? We were hurt. Other districts received more money, and we have our own issues, but they took away money from us, and people that voted for it hurt us. So, I don't care about other districts. I care about this district in Hoboken, and I want the public to know that their tax dollars weren't helped by the people that voted against this, okay, in the state legislature. So.
Thank you, Mr. Madigan. On this side, Mr. Biancamano, did you have a?
Yeah, just one comment tonight. 9.09, the approval of sidebar agreement for the athletic trainer. So, I was looking at the backup, and I was looking at many of the reports that were sent out, and it seemed to be that we approved of this in the past. And I'm just curious, the athletic trainer is somebody who's already hired? Is it somebody in our district that we already approved? So, why wouldn't we approve the sidebar agreement before we approved the position?
Okay, so, that's actually a very good question. Most districts have an in-house athletic trainer. Every school district with a high school is required to have an athletic trainer. There is a New Jersey certification for athletic training. So, no longer can you really have a full-time person from the outside servicing the kids. You can use consulting hours and different things like that to help. So, as a result of the certification for athletic trainer, all districts have this particular position. The person is required to be at all home practices and games, not away, but home. And so, by the requirement that the state of New Jersey has, if our teams travel from place to place, there's always a home-site athletic trainer available. As a result of that, athletic trainers, over the last maybe eight years or so, have kind of gone through a little bit of flux of whether or not they were part of the bargaining unit with teachers, or were they not. They have, since most districts include athletic trainers in a bargaining unit, they are considered certificated staff members because they're professionally certificated through the New Jersey Department of Education. And so, in Hoboken, in our recognition clause in the HEA contract, our athletic trainer is recognized. However, we do a sidebar agreement each year with the athletic trainer that enables us to flex time the athletic trainer's hours, both on a daily basis and then also on a yearly basis, so that the athletic trainer can actually have hours in the summertime, because we know that athletic practices take place in the summer. And we also know that our games don't usually happen during the school day. So, because they fall within a contract that hours are set for teaching professionals or other certificated professionals, there's usually a sidebar agreement that allows you to make some modifications on changes like that. So, each year, that's done as a sidebar. Now, the Board of Education can certainly consider in the future embedding language in the contract, so that there isn't a sidebar agreement, and it just becomes part of the general HEA contract. Either way, it doesn't really matter, because the position is a required position.
Okay, so, the position was already approved. Now, we're approving the sidebar agreements. And I'm just curious, in terms of the hours, of how we came up to this 12, 48.75 hours, is this based on what the athletic trainer put in for in years past, or?
It's not so much what the athletic trainer has put in, it's what the district has set as range of parameters, basically. So, this is, this is not on the basis of someone personally submitting hours and us approving it. It's based on, at some point, when the original sidebar was agreed to, my guess is, my assumption is, that the district probably did a survey or a collection of input from other districts to say, how many hours does the athletic trainer typically work during the summertime, and off-hours, and so on and so forth? And that's how it gets, how it got packaged together, and it just has.
And I guess, any increase in hours regarding overtime, it really has to do with what type of season it is, in case, I guess, the team makes it into the playoffs, and so on and so forth, correct?
Correct. And there isn't, this isn't an overtime issue, it's a flex time issue.
Flex time, excuse me.
Correct.
Okay, and do you feel that it is more cost-effective to bring somebody in? I know it's part of the contract, and when it's part of the contract, you know, our hands are tied and all of that. But do you think it's more cost-effective to, or, yeah, more cost-effective to have just a certified professional going forward, instead of having it part of the contract and hire somebody in-house and doing the sidebar? Or, I mean, and then, of course, do you get the other side of it, where we kind of want somebody in-house, because they're gonna know the students and things like that?
Yeah, there's, there's two components to that. And the first one is, the, having the individual in-house is, is pretty common. And just my personal experience in other districts with high school athletic programs, having a staff member on-site and within your own district is very powerful. But the second piece of it is, we did do an analysis, and reached out to a few different physical therapy, sport-oriented places, to find out what the cost would be. The hourly rates are very, very high. They would definitely increase what it, what it costs to pay a professional. But, in addition to that, most of the physical therapy places, one in particular, JAG Physical Therapy, which does a lot of supplemental athletic training, they do not look favorably upon, they are part of the same association that a lot, that the school athletic trainers are part of, and do not look favorably upon infringing or encroaching upon athletic trainers' work. So, as a result of that, we see that a lot of those places won't even entertain full-time roles in districts.
Understood. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just, I have one, and I'm just, I don't know why, I just escaped, I didn't see it, but I just wanted to just ask for just some clarification on 9.05, item 2. So, I see that we are hiring a new Mandarin Chinese teacher for, to replace Ms. Bruno at Wallace. So, does that mean that Wallace will no longer have Spanish, and we're switching over to Mandarin?
No. So, the two Spanish teachers that are on the agenda are replacing two open positions, one which was a retirement, and the other was a position that was a non-renewed position from the high school last year, regarding a content area that we had very little, if not any enrollment in. So, that's what the two new positions are. But you have to understand that on the agenda, we trace these and put these on there for the purpose of UPC codes, so that we're not issuing new UPC code numbers, so that we have the ability to actually see whether or not what Mr. Clubfeld was talking about before is, is it actually a brand-new staff member? Are we adding to the budget, or are we really replacing? And sometimes, when you replace, you're not actually replacing actual position for position, in terms of what they actually taught. It's the body that's in the budget is being replaced by someone else. So, that does not mean that there is not going to be Spanish at Wallace. Our world language teachers, just like our other related arts teachers, are actually kindergarten-through-12th-grade certificated professionals. So, when the full master schedules are finished, we will still be offering Spanish at the elementary school level, we'll still be offering it at the middle school level, we'll still be offering it at the high school level, but we are adding Mandarin Chinese to the curriculum, the overall world language curriculum.
Okay, great.
So, we do have two other elementary Spanish teachers that will, together as a team, we will round out the curriculum from kindergarten all the way through 12th grade with the entire gamut of world language teachers.
Okay, great. So, at elementary school, then, the children will have both, or will they choose?
It depends on the grade level. So, we're in the process of completing the master schedule right now. So, it does depend on that, and that'll be part of the, also, part of the August presentation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But at the middle school level, just so you know, the world languages that are being offered were Spanish, Mandarin, and French, but the enrollment, or the choices that the kids made, the preference seemed to fall more on the Spanish and Mandarin-Chinese side. The French numbers were a little low, although they're actually higher at the high school than they were last year. So, it's kind of interesting how they're, so, we're going to attempt to try to keep a section of French at the middle school at each grade level, to continue to build the high school program, and hopefully, continue to build the middle school French program as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Then, I think we can call the vote. Ms. Perez?
Okay. Wait, I'm sorry. All right, please. Are we gonna call the vote, roll call vote?
Please, on the consent agenda.
Okay. Ms. Angley?
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
Aye.
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Okay, 10.02, no.
Uh-huh.
10.09, abstain. And 10.10, no. Everything else, yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Sobolov?
Abstain on 10.02, check number 55439, and yes on everything else.
Mr. Clubfeld?
And I have to do the same, abstain on check number 55439 on item 10.02, and then I vote yes on everything else.
Okay. Very good.
Motion passes?
Yes.
Thank you. Time for public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. I believe I saw someone sign up. Oh, just call the names.
Yes.
You two speak first.
Pat Waters?
Waiter. Like a waiter in a restaurant. Pat Waiters, 1233 Park Avenue. I didn't get a chance to really browse through the agenda, but I want to thank all of you guys. I know it's vacation time. It's really hard for parents to contact some of you and get in touch with you. You know me, I seen you on the street, I stopped you on Washington Street, wherever I seen you eating with your family. But I want to thank everybody, because I brought some people with me here tonight, too, but people have been still coming to me, you know, and I'm trying to help them, you know, as far as getting their kids into the school system and seeing what's going on. I know it's kind of hard, it's gonna be real crazy this year, we got a crazy election coming up. So, I've been really busy, but I want to thank you guys, you know, just making yourself available, the ones that have, they're making themselves available. Thank you so much. I can be a pest. I understand it's vacation time, but please, I'm trying to rectify a lot of things that's going on, from the preschool to the three- and four-year-old program, kindergarten, you guys are doing a wonderful job. Thank God for the last meeting, I did go into detail and explain to a bunch of parents. Thank you so much again, Dr. Johnson, for the clarification, so they can understand exactly what's going on. I didn't get a real chance to go do this here, but this is gonna be the last meeting before we return back to school.
We have another meeting in August 22.
One more? Okay, so, are we gonna get, like, as far as the uniform policy and all of that, and another, like, a day for orientation, where people could come out and get more information? Parents have been asking me, so I told them I'm gonna come to the meeting and make sure, you know, you guys send me something to get the word out. I'll make sure I get it out for orientation and so forth. That's real important, and a uniform issue. And it's definitely, in writing, that the sixth and seventh graders is, like, back in the building. So, those things will be addressed before school starts, and I will definitely appreciate you guys getting in touch with me, Patricia W. 632, and everybody else, no, 538-464-57, my telephone number. Thank you, guys. Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Thank you.
Jenny Labenda? Did I say that correctly?
Thank you. Hi. Jenny Labenda, I live at 613 Fourth Street. My daughter attended kindergarten at Connors last year, and is excited to begin first grade there in September, and my younger daughter is gonna be starting pre-K 4 in Miles Square at St. Francis, and we're planning to send her to Connors also. And I'm here to call your attention to some of what's going on in the southwest of Hoboken around Connors, that I'm not sure if everyone is aware of. So, as, as I think you know, two years ago, almost no one among those of us who live in market-rate housing in the southwest, were talking about or considering Connors for either pre-K or elementary school. But over the past two years, the changes in the interest and attitude, especially among advantaged, middle-class families in the southwest neighborhood, have been incredible. I don't know if you're privy to the buzz among the parents, but there is a great deal of excitement around Connors, integrating Connors as it expands and becomes a truly diverse school. And that's not just parents of rising kindergartners, but parents of little ones in daycare are looking forward to having their kids join the Connors community. And what we're really excited, that there has been increased attention on, on your all parts, to equity throughout the district. There is also a strong feeling of being, or certainly was, and a little bit undermined by the district, as, although Irving just filled me in, walked in a minute late, that there'll be three sections of kindergarten at Connors. Still, that, that's far, that means that the southwest, the south of Hoboken, below 7th Street, there's three sections of kindergarten at Connors, and if you count Calabro in that, you know, under 7th Street, and then 11 in the, in the northern part of town, between the other schools. I know that my friend, Aileen McGurk, has raised this here before, and I want to second her comments and concerns, and I would add to them now, I would add to them now that, as we see enrollment increasing throughout the district in the primary grades, and I know that mayoral candidates are already talking about new school building projects, and I know that Dr. Johnson has mentioned this in that in the past as well, I would urge you to think about building a new school or a school expansion, specifically in the southwest of Hoboken. The only reasonable model for elementary school placements in Hoboken is a neighborhood school model. One square mile seems small, but it's also a walking town. So, we're too small for busing, but there's also extremely limited parking spots for drop-off and pickup. There need to be neighborhood schools that serve the population within walking distance, as measured, this is important, by what's reasonable to expect for young children, kindergarten first, second, third graders, to get to and from school, even in inclement weather. So, that doesn't mean walking, you know, we can walk from all the way downtown to all the way uptown, no problem, what a nice stroll, but a five-year-old and a six-year-old who can't walk alone, can't do that. There is an incredibly and disproportionately small number of, as I just mentioned, small number of spots in the entire southwest of Hoboken for elementary school children. But people, people there in the southwest, not everyone, but a critical mass, and this is what has changed in the past even 12 months, a critical mass are ready and eager for integrated neighborhood schools. We hope that you will consider the need to build or expand specifically in the southwest in the coming years, as this becomes more of an explicit issue that's being dealt with. Thank you very much for your time and for.
Thank you. Any comments, any reactions? Then, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.